All right, let's call this meeting of the planning board of the village board to bring the board. We're public hearing today. We don't have a huge amount of business, hopefully we'll get through relatively short order. Does anyone have any items they'd like to add to the agenda?
Yes, but it will be quick. I just want to discuss the application that we have and the things that are on the website. We briefly mentioned about checklist. And I was thinking we should also incorporate some sort of, you know, the steps to getting your application through the very first time, so you don't have to be.
Yeah, let's let that to the board business section now. Thank you, a second.
Also Jesse, the six East Village Year was not on the agenda?
Yeah, I think we're in. We need, we need to just make sure that all the documents are sent out, but I don't think we have any additional solicitation unless unless we have update, do we have any updates to the documents that we should be looking at? Do we have that? Okay, great. Yeah, anyone like to not maybe to add that to the? Okay. Well. Why don't we actually jump into that then, with the whole business? So my, my recollection is the outstanding ask that we had for Six Village Year was adding lots, parcel A to the table. Where's the?
Oh, I have the original blue lot, okay.
Any other updates besides that that we should know about? Okay. In terms of John, I had a question about the given that it's a new parcel and have an established use, what is the, any, any use, any new use that a, that a owner takes on would have, would have to be approved as a part of, because like going from no use to a use is a change of use?
Um, yeah, to look at the code for that zoning district, if it's a residential use, you may not need, you probably don't need site plan approval for.
Cool.
But.
Okay. Yeah, I think, so I think this is good on what we need from you, I think we've got a draft of a letter to the county.
That's the six thirty nine.
Yeah. Yep.
And then there would, there should be a referral to the village engineer. Is that by letter or just email with the documents?
An email with documents.
Okay, okay.
Cool, and that's, that's something, so your guys then that was the village engineer and all that?
Yep.
Okay.
And we'll, 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 I guess we can see, or at least let, let you know when we, when we send that out, so you're not wondering if we've done, if we've done it.
That'd be great, okay. Thank you guys, I really appreciate it.
Any other questions about Six Village? All right, let's move on to seventy two. You can stay there if you'd like, whatever, whatever you're comfortable with. So I know we received a bunch of updated documents from you. Forty. Oh, right, yes. Go ahead.
I'd just like to recuse myself from proceeding on seventy two main, personal relationship reasons. Thanks.
Get the right.
It's a large.
A large, okay, great.
And those are also bigger than what we have.
Okay. Would you mind just kind of walking us through the, the new, the new documents that you got?
So as per request, the last meeting, you asked for trash, which I had forgotten was actually on the last drawing, but it's still there in the same place. It's in the northeast corner, so top left, the way the words are oriented.
Sorry, which, which document are we looking at right now?
Either one, it's in all of them.
So any version of them.
Oh, no, no, that's a floor plan, that's from last meeting.
Yeah.
It's the site plan looking ones, yeah, even if a larger one, there you go, there you go. So I think if you have the words oriented towards you, it'll be your top left is where the dumpsters and the.
Gotcha, so the dumpster enclosures there on the top left are for both.
Both properties. They're both buildings, same property.
Yeah.
And has been there historically for quite some, ten years, I think.
I have to drive around the dump, the dump truck.
Yeah, when it's doing its thing, yep, when it's doing its thing. So it's the same, it was there on the last drawing, you asked me for it, I failed to remember that it was.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The second thing you asked for was labeling of the entrances, so I labeled the side entrance that's in the small courtyard, as well as the front door entrance. All the changes are in red font, in case that helps direct your eye to it.
Okay, and this, these little red boxes that are.
Chairs.
Those are, so that exterior seating for the deli?
Yep.
Okay.
And so you, that was the third thing you asked for, was to show the exterior seating, so we drew those in, those are in red as well.
Okay.
And those were the changes there, and then there's now, now I will go, those changes are on both versions you have. And now between the two versions, one has parking and one does not have it all.
Yep, right.
So I put this in some of the, the commentary that I provided as well.
Yeah.
From a spacing perspective, the spacing distance for perpendicular parts, so the width of the potential access driveway in that backyard
Yeah.
is some twelve feet, but so sub state minimum. But for a minute, if we assume that it was twelve feet, it would only allow for a one-way driveway, which necessitates perpendicular parking, right, not angled parking that you then back all the way out of.
Yeah.
For perpendicular parking, you have a twenty-foot slot, village, so the standards are eight feet, village standard's nine, so a little bit more spacious in the width of the parking spot.
Yeah.
So I marked all of them at nine by twenty, so all of them are, I had them marked at nine by twenty perpendicular. However, with that, between property, between the space, and I, hopefully this is like visualizing, not narrating it, but between the parking space and the minimum one lane driveway, there isn't enough linear feet to have standard parking. My additional commentary would be that to have people drive in there and come out of there who are not familiar with it and its nuances, I, my personal take, it's not a matter of code or math or measurement, is I think it's a dangerous place to have people coming in and out.
Sure.
Both because those customers would be unaware of the sort of effect of blind spot that the historic brick wall provides. And many people walking on Fair Street are not always local and not really aware, oh, wait, this is a semi-active driveway here, so I think turning it into customer parking would be possibly dangerous and, you know, in, in addition to it not having the, the measurement distance to be standard.
Okay. When, when did Lipishon take occupancy there?
I have the first lease, I think was eighteen or twenty year, like I can go back and do it a long time ago.
Do you happen to know if there would happen to be a site plan review?
I don't happen to know, no, I don't.
All right, that's cool. The, the, the only reason I'm asking is, is insofar as a, a previous planning board might have made statements, statements or determinations about the parking, I would want to at least have that be a consideration of this board to understand what, what the impact would be. Is there an easy way to know?
It'd be like twenty-five plus years ago.
Yeah.
We do have building department files that have been scanned. I can, I can look it up under the tax ID.
I looked through the whole, like I've done the project, I've looked through that, I've seen nothing.
In our, at our files or at county or something?
The town or village.
I'll, I'll look though.
Yeah. Yeah. And the other thing we asked for was exterior lighting?
Again, there is no, there is no change to exterior lighting, you asked it, right, you asked also for exterior lighting and signage?
Yeah.
And there are no changes to it.
Okay, so there will be a sign for the deli?
It will be painted on.
Painted on, okay. One, one last thing from, from my end, can you just, for the record, restate the use that you're seeking here?
Sure.
Yeah.
The, the use for seventy-two main for the ground floor
Yep.
will be a deli space. John was here and sort of spoke to the nature and character of it, do you want me to give some of that?
No, I, I. I think just, I just want to like be clear that the use that's being sought is for the deli, and that's the, that's the use that, 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 yeah.
Yeah, the, the upstairs has been an apartment, or it is legal apartment, it has been, it will remain one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool, great. Any other questions from the rest of the board?
The, the apartment people, do they have any? Do they have any involvement in this process as to whether or not they like, they're allowed to have an opinion on a change from a chocky shop to a deli?
They're certainly going to be invited to the public hearing.
Okay.
There's no one in residence.
But, yeah.
No tenant.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no one that.
So we will definitely invite them.
Okay.
To give the unit notice.
In terms of parking, we have, just, just to kind of recount all the uses that are on this property, we have a sought use of the deli, we've got a residential use above the deli, single unit, single dwelling. We have Lipishon's use as a restaurant, and then we've, is there, there's residential above?
Two above.
Two above. Yeah, so I mean, I think like, you know, the, taken all together, there's, like even, even with establishing a three, there's just no, there's no real way to even come close to meeting that, like the aggregate parking requirements
Yeah.
for the, for, for the lot, so I think, I think given that and given, I personally, I tend to agree that, that there's a couple of things going on in that backspace, in that, in that, in that backyard, that it is, I think it, I do see vehicles using it to park, so it is being used somewhat, it's not, I don't think usually there's three, maybe there's two sometimes.
One, sometimes two, it's staff parking and they're sort of familiar with the nuance of coming in and out of that narrow opening and.
Yeah, yeah, so I think from my perspective, I'm not personally super incentivized to, to seek some, some additional parking for this particular use, given all the other uses that are on the, on the parcel. But it's, it still doesn't meet the, the, the site plan does not meet the requirements as it stands, so we need to, we need to fix that in some way. I think last time you mentioned that you would like to seek a waiver from the village board. Does anyone on the board object to planning board composing a, a letter to the village board support of?
No, I, I don't have any, I, I know, I know that, that parcel, and I do agree that that brick wall there, for people who are not familiar with it, could be dangerous for people coming in and out, and the way that this is, I, I don't know the measurements, I just have to trust this, and it does seem like it might not be the easiest to, to get more than one or two in here, maybe three, but with that, and with the dangerous exit, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, yeah, no touch.
Uh, do we need a vote to authorize me to send that letter, I guess, since it's, it's an official act?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I'll, I'll.
I'll make a motion to like authorize you to send the letter.
Okay.
Okay.
What was that? Oh, no, to send, we, we, there's a, the mechanism for the board, for a parking waiver is that the village, the planning board sends out a request to the village board saying, here's the details of the property on behalf of the applicant, we're requesting the waiver, parking, the parking, well, I think my, my read of the code is that we, like if the request is made, we have to make the referral.
And you can either.
And we could say, we strongly hope you don't do it, or we strongly hope you do do it, or, or we don't care, you can do whatever you want. But, but we, we must make the referral as it's requested, so I think in this case we will make the referral, and I think I understand the, the board's position on it, so I'll, I'll try to include color and look, I guess we'll approve the language next time, or can I do this, it kind of out of band, okay, I'll do it out of band then. Okay. Does anyone have anything else for seventy-two main?
Nope.
So I think there's a, I don't have a good sense of what the turn, the typical turnaround time is for this referral, and obviously they have some, some amount of time to respond.
The, the village board, yeah, that doesn't even necessarily have to happen before the next step in your process?
Terms of having a public hearing?
Right, so you can go ahead with.
I see, so we could, we could basically go through the public hearing and, and have a condition of the approval be that the village board grants the waiver.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, in that case, I think we should probably schedule the public hearing.
Seems like the application is probably complete at this point, so.
Yeah. We're gonna like the, I guess we'll take a vote about the application being complete and.
You don't have to take a separate vote.
All right, well then let's, let's, let's go ahead and pick a time. I know we have folks, so then you've refused. So with the four of us, we need to be really clear about who's available when. So I think the soonest we could probably do is the first week of.
Oh, no, not soon.
Well, I don't think we have enough time between now and.
Pretty, pretty tight.
Yeah, because we have to get it, we have to get it published. It has to be published ten, ten days prior.
Yeah, that can't happen.
To get everything done very quickly. I mean, if the board, Karen, as far as the, the publication of a newspaper, is there enough time?
Well, depending on what day you're talking.
With the.
The twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven.
The twenty-seventh, so are we talking July eleventh?
No, so the next, the next planning board meeting is the twenty-seventh, right?
Yes, yes, okay, so that, so that notice.
June, of June, yeah, okay, yeah.
And that notice would be to the printers by tomorrow.
Yeah, I think that's. Yeah, that's probably cutting it too close, I think.
They have to have the notice by the Friday to publish in the paper on Wednesday. So there's no way we could do it next Friday, and then, so it would have to be done by tomorrow, so that means we'd have to have the notice ready to go in and, you know, so it's a little tired, I think.
For, for the board's consideration, I'll be away on the eleventh. I would love to move this forward, I'm more than happy to help speak to the newspaper, see if any leniency could be granted, if it's not turned in tomorrow, would be willing to attempt for this tw- twenty-seventh. And if we succeed, excellent, and, and if the paper is flexible and.
It's, I mean, it's kind of like, I don't know how we would do that, because they use, the, the PCNR uses an app now, it's Quick Ad Creator, so it's not like when we used to call Doug and say, you know, could you do this, so I, I don't know, John.
If it's the end of the day tomorrow, I would say.
Well, they, usually they like it ten o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, if that's the case, then.
Yeah, if they try to get it past noon, they, they don't want it, they won't do it.
How about this? We can tentatively schedule it, assuming that
We try.
the magic happens and it gets put in, but, but we will, we will, we'll have to cancel it if it, if it doesn't show up in time, so does that seem reasonable? We just, we give it a shot?
Yeah.
I'm good on twenty-seventh. The applicant's not on the eleventh of July.
Right.
And, you know.
Correct. And I'm not good on that.
Karen, you look, sorry, I'll check.
No, I'm just concerned because the notice would have to be ready to go tomorrow to get to the paper.
Yeah. And that's on, that's basically a coordination between you and Jonathan?
Well, I think when we I'm trying to remember, because each board is different.
Yeah.
Since you've been the chair.
Yeah.
Have you been doing the notices in the public hearing, or was I doing them and sending them to?
You and I had a, you and I had a draft template that we were working from, I think I had added a little bit at the bottom, but I'm, I'm fine with that continuing to be the template, and I'm also.
You know, I can try.
Yeah, or I mean, I, I could probably get a little.
But it would definitely have to, to be to the, to the publisher, like tomorrow morning, like nine o'clock.
Okay, it should be pretty, pretty simple.
Okay, so if, so if we get it.
Yeah.
Because I'm going to be here at nine o'clock.
I don't, I don't want everyone to stress out about it, I think we're gonna, we're gonna do our best. And we'll see what happens, and if it doesn't get published, then we'll have to postpone, but we'll give it a shot.
Yeah, very much appreciated.
Okay. All right.
Is there a motion to schedule a public hearing for June twenty seven? I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Okay, on waiver?
I just ask, first time going to the process, is there anything else that I should be prepared that the board might like to see at that public hearing? Other, you know, anything additional that is sort of?
No, I mean, we'll ask, we'll ask you to kind of go through it for the public, so if you think about a concise narrative that you would like to present to the public, that would be great. And we'll be addressing any public comment that come up between now, now and then, and there's, there's a few other details on, you know, pub, you know, Karen will, will go through, but, but posting the, the notice of the public hearing on the, on the building and making sure we have, well, we'll send you addresses of neighbors to send out certified mail, and so we'll go through all that, and actually we're about to do it right now, with, with the next, next bit of business, but actually, the, the, the next, next business for today, so, yeah.
All right, wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Okay, new business, forty Main Streets.
Hi, just hi, Garrettson, my wife, Rachel Young. We're looking for a change of use from retail to, well, there's some debate, personal service gym or membership club, if I can describe the project a little bit. And, and we submitted a description and a paperwork, I guess this is more like a workshop?
Yeah, this would be, this would be a little more like a workshop, and I think, I wanted to check on the use, I read it as a health and fitness establishment.
I agree, I think it's pretty clearly within that definition, it's not really our call to make, and I don't think it really makes a difference, but, yeah, I think that's, that's what it is.
Yeah, yeah. The only significance of that is that it is allowed use with site later fund review, which is one of the reasons why we're here, and the, there's a caveat that you can't reduce the storefront glass in this particular thing, so that's, that's all, but please continue.
Yeah, so the, what I, you know, submitted for a description, we'd like to build, well, there's not going to be, there's not really a building, actually, there's no changes to the exterior, there's no changes to the interior. Everything that we'll be installing, you know, will be essentially, the idea is to create like the ultimate kind of home gym slash high-intensity workout space, but very accessible, you know, for the community, all ages, gender, so on and so forth. We're going to be, like sourcing the absolute top of the line, sort of, you know, the brands like Rogue and Rep, they, they create like functional training equipment, racks and stuff like this, but they'll be sort of, you know, as part of the process, we're going to be doing a whole marketing thing, and, and we'll actually kind of solicit feedback from the community, we'll see, you know, like this is, I can't live without, this is like my go-to exercise, and so, you know, we'll, we'll get that equipment in as well. I think the key differentiators, like unlike most gyms, where it's sort of like sell as many memberships as you can, we're going to be very deliberate about capping the number of members, and there'll be some sort of online app-based registration. We're going to have three sort of stations in the gym, it is a small space below eight, they're square feet, and so there'll be sort of like three stations, three, three areas, two full sort of racks where you could do any kind of, I mean, we could talk about, my wife is a fitness person, she can talk about all of the, the various, you know, if you have a question, like what, what exercises will be supported, so on and so forth. But yeah, and, and so the members who are paying a monthly membership fee will, will, you know, go on, go online or, or through the app and, and reserve a, one of the slots, essentially, right? And our goal is to have it open from, basically, I mean, we discussed twenty-four hours, I think, like realistically, five AM to one AM. You know, and, and the other thing is, there's not going to be full-time staff, so we'll have cameras, and we'll have like an access control system. All right, so that either like a keypad or, or members will have cards to swipe at, at the front door. And then, you know, we'll have sort of potentially events, community events, or people can have their own personal trainer, we'll have virtual personal training, you know, so like iPads with all the subscription software, so you can do it, you know, on your own, or you can have your personal trainer come. You know, it's also a platform where if personal trainers in the community want, so, you know, rent the slot, rent the space, that'll also be, you know, possible, so.
How does the personal training aspect interact with the gated access, like are they given?
It's not, I, I think this is like a little bit in the idea phase, so either they themselves will have to have a membership, or, you know, a member can also bring a personal trainer with them to their slot, right? And they can organize that themselves, or, you know, we'll have a list of people maybe, but a little bit flexible in that regard. And then it's really just like you'll have, if you, if you look on the site plan and the drawings, there's sort of, there's sort of like a little, like a quarter wall sort of back room, and then there's sort of the, the front room is two-thirds of the space, and the back room is a third of the space, so maybe that will be more for, you know, personal training, if people want to use that space. But it's not like completely delineated, right, it's, it's sort of, it's all sort of like open, basically.
Is there a room in the back? Is there like a tiny little, it's like a, they're like a, it's a little hard to see from the, the unfortunately didn't, didn't come through on very well.
Those are like full image. I think they came out, it's like rendered, um, I also. I also sent through just this afternoon, I don't know if they were able to print, but like floor plans and site plans, and I had just gotten from the, the owner, so yeah.
Karen, did it make it into the packet or?
Yeah, yeah, that.
You know, this is side by side. Yes, so if you have, yes, okay.
Okay, okay, great, I got it, I got it. Yeah.
I've got some series of questions, just, they're all doing the same thing. Um, I've got some series of questions, just, um, they're all doing the same thing, so, um, if you just. So tell me what your protocol would be if there's, if some, there's a health emergency, so someone's had like a, like a heart emergency.
Yeah, so, um, we'll, we'll have waivers, right?
Having a heart attack, what do you do?
Yeah, well, I I guess we'll have an AD. We'll have an A D machine in in the gym.
Someone's having a heart attack, what are you gonna do?
That's it.
We're not gonna be, no one's gonna be there.
I think you asked about like emergency access, like uh.
Somebody's having a heart attack in your gym, somebody's, you've got a gym and someone's having a heart attack.
Yeah, 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 or injury.
Alright, second question.
Yeah.
Second question, see, I've got issues, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so there's fiscal violence between two of your members, what are you gonna do about it?
Yeah, uh, third question, yeah.
Um, sorry, if I'm not giving you enough time, just let me know, okay?
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't have answers, okay, um.
So, 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 there's, there's uh complaints from community members that there's. Vices criminal activity out of your gym, there's a series of 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 membership. That uh circulating through your gym at 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 different hours of the day, and there, there's, there's business going on at your gym.
I see, right, legal business.
Legal business, so, so basically, with, without. That staff supervision, like. I I I just don't see this working.
I see.
Yeah, I also think, I mean, I echo what Ben's saying because um there are a lot of. There are a lot of variables because you could have people that are gained access codes and. If there's nobody there to physically monitor them, except visually, then I think it really opens up a liability issue. For the village to have approved something that allows, um, you know, anyone to do.
Well, I think that's, that's probably worth checking with Jonathan, do that, do we have?
I I guess, I guess, like, whatever, like, um, someone could go to the tennis courts, right? And uh, sort of. Act gain access to the tennis courts and then do everything we're describing here, so uh, so they just, it's a difference being a commercial space, right?
No, but thi- this is behind a closed door, though, that's, that's, that has some privacy to it, I mean, even if there's glass.
Yeah.
There's some privacy to this, that 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 people could be performing business. And whereas tennis court is a public space that the police have access to, and by the way, our police force is not a private security company.
Right, right.
What are the hours of the tennis court? Oh, yeah, I mean, he wants five AM to one AM, I was, does the tennis court have? Limitation?
Yeah, I don't know, but if if somebody's like working in the tennis courts and in the, and the police officer drives by, the police officer walks into the tennis court.
Right, right, yeah, and I mean. I guess I have a concern about the people, yeah, people, I mean. There's nothing else on Main Street that's operational at that hour, right? So, I mean, this, this just seems a little bit out of character for Main Street, to be honest.
I think I I would also encourage the board to focus in on. The, like, unstaffed gyms are a thing in the world, like, Beacon has, has had a number of them. In 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 years past. Um, but I don't think this is not a, this, we're not, we're not trying to talk about a novel business model.
Right.
Now, there are a lot of concerns around access, some of which are often dealt with via like. Insurance, like, you know, having, uh, you know, it will be challenging to get the business insured properly without proper access controls, because. They'll be like, oh, random people are gonna come in and injure themselves on your equipment, um, and we don't wanna cover that. Um, I think that the access, the time access is like very fair game for the, because that, that, like, people accessing at five AM, one AM.
Yeah.
Like, where are the entrances, what are the, what are the nearby residences? What is, uh, you know, is there, is there a beep every time that somebody comes in, like, those are things that are like really relevant, I think, for. The impact on the community. Um, I think, I I wanna like, I think it's important just because it was brought up, to check with Jonathan about like. In terms of, in terms of liability, let's say we, we say, okay, fine, this is, this, you know, we have concerns, but we, we. You know, here are the ways in which we think you should address it from the planning board's perspective. Is there ever in induced liability for the village on, on those approvals for uses?
Hmm, not that I can think of, correct, yeah.
So it doesn't mean that we shouldn't interrogate these things, I just wanna make sure we're doing it in in the right bounds. Of of land use that the, that the planning board is is trying to interrogate, which is impact, impact on, on the neighborhood. Um, general, general safety issues, um, so I think those are all really fair game.
Yeah.
Um, but we don't, I don't think we have to worry too much about induced liability for, um. Like, I also wouldn't wanna, one, one, wouldn't want to have to entertain. Uh, considerations of liability for like medical marijuana dispensary, of like, okay, what if they dispense the wrong thing, like, well, that's on them. Um, um, so. Uh, anyway, I I think that those are, those are some, maybe some guidelines on on how, on where to spend the time interrogating. So I think that the like, from my perspective, this question of access is a, is a key one.
Yeah.
Uh, and questions about like. Not, not just the hours, but like the mech, the kind of the mechanism of access, uh, and, um. And how, how will this notion, how will this be enforced, like?
And how emergency personnel will get access.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's for sure, like, if someone, if if someone has a heart attack, and it's conscious enough to make a call.
Yeah.
It's emergency services, you don't want the emergency services being stuck outside, you know, you know, maybe the glass on that building is especially tough. And they can't get inside, so I think there's some, there's some consideration of like, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Um, but I think we should have answers for those about, about what the plan is, and I, I, I sure, because this is not a novel. Business that somebody has solved these problems.
Right.
Um, but I think we would just wanna know what the solutions are before we felt comfortable.
Because I know like twenty four hour fitness and stuff like that, you know, from the early, we're not even proposing twenty four hours.
Yep.
That, you know, the early morning hours, like, you know, there's no one present, right, and it's one of those things where people, they have a key card or something.
Yep.
But for the access control, I'll, I'll research it.
Yeah, well, it's, it's not a common.
Like for businesses that have a perimeter gate, to have some kind of arrangement with the, the fire department or the police where they, I guess, would have like a, a card. To get in, so might be worth uh having a conversation with them.
We're, we're gonna take a public comment right now, uh, but if you would like to.
I have some thoughts for you as a priority.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, so the access.
Note, but when you bring a beacon.
Yeah.
You know, that's a city, you know, we're talking about a.
A hu- a hundred percent understand also.
If something was.
Yep.
Approved, and beacon doesn't mean that we should flip the beacon.
Yeah, I I I agree with that, I think that, you know, we have to, we have to be, it has to make some snivellates, and I think in a similar vein. Uh, a, a, a big box gym has way different staffing and usually is located in a way different location, like, that's not, that's not the. Consideration that we have here, so, um, I think those are, the hours of operation for me are really about like. Uh, sound and screening and like, you know, where, uh. You know, is there, is there residents directly above the door? Uh, like, that's important to know, uh, for those.
Is there a residence?
Upstairs, is there like an upstairs or, okay?
There's no upstairs.
Okay.
There's the, the kind of the office in the back.
Yeah.
It's a retail, sort of next door.
So what are you gonna do with the apothecary, because they have direct access, right, there's.
Yeah, so as a, the, 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 the current owner is, um, I, I think they're changing the door to the apothecary, so it'll be two. Well, three separate.
They go garage door now?
Yeah, they'll be a garage door with like a door.
Was a door in it, yeah.
It'll be separate.
Okay.
And they're gonna, you know, that's a wallet.
Yeah.
All, all the way through, so.
So that they can basically rent out this space like separately.
Um, I will say on the positive side.
Yeah.
I think the village does need health facilities like this, so I'm, I, uh. Uh, you know, I, I would love for the village to have better access to weight equipment.
Well, I mean, I think like, as far as like the need, you know, all sports is twenty minutes away.
Yep.
There's the, you know, driving as opposed to, you know, walking, um, you know, if this was like, uh. Whatever, a newer suburb, people have two, three car garages with, with basements, you know what I mean, like, they have. You know, home, the home gym facility, that thing, whereas, you know, we live in the village, and I mean, we live in apartment, even houses, like, one car garage, it's, it's a lot of people, it's not. Really that uh possible to have, like, to build out a, a gym in their own home.
Look at the noise factor, I mean, those are really thick. Walls or, uh, the glass is thick, I mean, I would almost imagine if you screamed, you might not be able to hear it from the street.
Oh.
Um.
I don't know.
So like, it's a good thing that the, uh, there's not uh noise out onto the street, or it's a bad thing? Could be loud, right, so one, one thing we've discussed with the, the current owners, like apothecary is right next door, right? So like, if they're happy with that, but yeah, I mean, I, I would assume it doesn't, isn't gonna affect the people on the street or outside or anywhere, um.
Because I would imagine that would be the concern of anybody living around there, if, you know.
Yeah.
And, but I personally wouldn't mind to see that the village is a little active at midnight or eleven, but that's me. It's, it's, for me, it's nice to see that something else is going on and not everything is closed.
Yeah.
And there's a little activity going on, but that's my personal opinion, and it has nothing to do with the board, so.
Um, does anyone have other comments they'd like to?
Uh, um. I question the hours, uh, the, both hands. You know, I don't know what, well, I'm curious, my head's sort of curious as to. How late any of the restaurants, how late is the depot open?
I mean, most of the restaurants, a lot of them list it, it's not a Friday or a Saturday. Uh, Level Sean is, is closed at eight, right? Uh, I think the, the depot is closed at eight, uh, maybe, um, Jay Murphy is open a little later, but again, that's. The weekend, so.
Yeah, I, I'm just. You know, I, like, we, we're not on Main Street, but we do like to sleep when, when possible with the windows open and things. And cars, parking and, and lights going on in, in buildings.
Yeah.
If, if, because I know there. I don't think, I don't think there's apartments like on either side, but there are across the street, so the lights would.
There are, there are residences upstairs. Next to, there's like an alley next to the building, and then there's apartments upstairs next door, right?
Yeah, that, that's my only.
Yeah.
That's my only, I mean, that's, and this is just, you know, the first meeting and that's.
Yeah.
That's my, that, the, the concept I'm fine with, um. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'm only. Just a little, I just questioned all the amount hours.
Sound system, no sound system?
Um, like Bluetooth speakers, so, you know, like a sort of personal type sound. And I think, uh, sort of the maximum, if, if you have three people, three stations, three people using a time, like one. Maybe one personal trainer, you're looking at four people, um, sort of max at any given time.
Yeah.
Um, the hours, this is like, we're flexible on hours.
Yeah.
It would be good to have it starting at like, yeah, there are those like early bird people, four or five AM.
Yeah.
You know, if you say like after midnight, it's, you know, that's fine, we, we can cap it at midnight, let's say.
Yeah.
But, uh, the early morning hours, like, there's people, not me, but there's people that like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh. I also like that you're a gym, I think it's, it's a good thing, I think, so we do need it, I, I'm, the no supervision thing, I've got a, a clearly a big problem.
Yeah, that's, eh, you and I align the same thing, I think that the non-supervisor, you know, um. Aspects in the village with this, it is a problem for me, that's.
Yes, I, I guess, like, the question would be like, like legally, what, what would be the requirements, what could we do to ameliorate, and then. I mean, the economics obviously don't work with having a staff, so, um, yeah. If, if that's, uh, you know, the access control, if it's, it's cameras, stuff like this, um. You know, with the police and the fire, like, what, what are we sure they do?
Just as a point of view, because the plate board is not saying what's legal and what's not legal, that's, that's, that, like, we have, we have, um, we work within the context of.
Yeah.
Uh, but beyond that, we are trying to make, uh, kind of valid, um, valid uses. You know, you are allowed this use.
Right.
But we also have a responsibility for shaping the details of that use in a way that fits in with the community and, and, um. You know, is a benefit, not just to you as, as the business owner, but also to the, to the village.
Yeah.
As a whole, so that's, that's the line we're trying, trying, trying to navigate, and I think. Um, if I can, if I can maybe kind of summarize what I, what I'm hearing from the, from the board, I think that like. Where we got some, we got some pros, we got some cons, I think the main con is there's too many things that are, that are unknown right now, but like, we need actually. Some buttoned up details about, like, what is the actual mechanism for access? Um, you know, if we, if we are feeling like that expanded hour set is too, is too big. What is a, like, from your perspective, what still gets the, gets the job done?
Yeah.
But maybe is a little bit tighter on the availability of time, and, um. And, uh, yeah, so I think we just need, we, we need to try to, we're, right now, we're kind of. We, we have both, we have some things that feel unworkable, like, the un, the unsupervised thing, for me personally, um. Is not un, un, like, off the table as a valid approach, but it really raises the bar. For answering all these other questions in a really detailed way. Um, now, I can't speak for the rest of the board, it may not, there may not be a bar that, that, that you can reach. For them on that, on that access, on, 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 on that access. So that's a thing we're just gonna have to navigate the best we can, but we'll start. By coming back with as much detail as, as, as you can about how we're actually gonna to address these things and what the plan is, and I think, um. We'll just, we'll do our best to go from there.
Okay, and then, and there's, are there any other things then besides the, this point, like, um, like the parking or, um, site plan or? Yeah, entrance egress.
I didn't get a chance to look at today's submission, but I know the board would be looking for a floor plan that shows the entire building.
Yeah, but that's what we just said. Highlighted, what is this retail space?
Yeah, if there's any signage details, that would be a good thing to include, um.
Yeah, signage will just be like, um, like a kind of a sticker thing on the main window.
On the glass.
Probably external additional signage.
Um.
It would be something part of the, the building inspector's normal process.
Um, and I think the, um, there are. Uh, I don't know that, the, I didn't, so, it would be useful to look at, do we have the, um. The full site plan that was submitted today that has the full building? Like, I just have lots of pictures of a toilet.
Yeah, it's called, it's called side by side.
Oh, that's a side by side, okay.
Yeah, this, if, yeah, the ones, like, the one on the left. Oh, sorry, sorry, it's the panel on the right and then the unit on the left.
Gotcha. Okay, and is there, is there any parking associated with this lot?
Uh, not, not that I'm aware.
Do we know, if, if there's any parking probably associated with it?
I'm not sure about the status of whether or not the, the property has any off-site parking.
I don't think so.
Right.
Um, and for this use, uh, the number of required spaces is not specified by the judge. It's up to the board to determine, uh, what a reasonable number, the off-street spaces is.
Yeah, I think this is where the, I think in the parking table, the club membership is the closest I could see, and then maybe using it as a proxy.
Right.
Uh, but even given the, the volume you're expecting currently, that's maybe even aggressive, so, um. That's something we'll have to, we'll have to discuss with the board, um, maybe next time, I think, maybe the. I'd like us to get a little bit further on some of the other details before, before we dive into that, but, um. Seems reasonable. Yeah.
So what would the next, uh, thing be?
So.
Date maybe?
Yeah, so, um, if you are able to get us, uh, updated details, uh, let's say, before. The twenty second. A few days before the next meeting, basically, they give us a chance to review, um, then we'll, we'll make sure you're in the agenda for next time and. We'll have some more discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um. Onto our main event, public hearing, twenty six main, thank you for your patience, um. Alright, um, I get a motion, uh, to open the public hearing to twenty six main.
I'm making motion to open the public hearing to twenty six.
Second.
Two seconds. Uh, all in favor?
Uh.
Okay, all right, um, let's see here. Need the notice. All right, um.
To read.
I would like to read it, it's not, it's not super long, um. Plenty more will consider uh, the application by Gina Larson Stoller of twenty six Main Street, number one, Cold Spring, New York. Uh, the owner is Joseph Zag.
Zagame.
Zagame, okay. Uh, Joseph Zagame of twenty six Main, number two, Cold Spring, uh, Cold Spring, New York, one oh five six. The subject property is native forty eight point one two dash one dash five seven, on the tax map. Is at twenty six Main Street, number one, Cold Spring, New York, and the business district B one. Uh, as well as the village's historic. The applicant proposes a change from a personal service to retail, requiring a site plan review of, for change of use and parking table. Uh, of village law. Uh, the planning board will consider all verbal and or written statements from all persons interested in the proposed application. Of the various manners described above. The planning board will consider, will, will consider also, will also consider such further relief as a fine thousand thirty. Okay, um. So let's confirm a few things, um, has the notice been timely published in an official newspaper? Great. Um. And I see that we have um, certified mail receipts for all the affected parties. Uh, let's do a quick review to make sure those are. Correct. Thanks. Have we received any public comment?
No, there has been no public comment received by village.
Okay. Be very contentious, public character, but. Um, yeah. Um. Okay, um.
Uh.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get to that a, a little bit, a little bit later, but in terms of our, our receipt of, of, and of any comment, there is none. Um, so I'd like to state, um, I believe we previously determined this is a type two action under seeker. Uh, so.
Yeah, I think at the last meeting, now the four vote, it's a, I recognize it's a second.
Um, okay, um. As applicant to come and just give the public a brief um, summary of what's planned and uh, what you're asking for.
Yeah, absolutely, um, so we are seeking to open up.
Would you like, coming up here just because uh, the, the folks online, I want to make sure they're able to, to hear you.
Sit.
You can sit, it's fine, I just want to make sure that they can hear you.
Yes, so um, we're looking to open a retail um, homeware slash tabletop slash furniture store. Um, called Brass Monkey Home, uh, focused on kind of like globally inspired pipewares, um. And. We're going to be um, doing a lot of drop shipping for the furniture, so we won't be taking that into our store, we'll just kind of have it as a sho- showroom. We're looking to have um, a lot of people be able to customize that furniture as well. Um, we are taking in a lot of the smaller stuff to actually our home location. Uh, just cause we also don't want to see a lot of packages being delivered, maybe at off times and everything. Um, so they're kind of like, you know, we're taking that on there, and then as far as the larger stuff, we do have a storage facility. That we'll be utilizing and then bringing in with like a box truck, um, so you won't be seeing big eighteen wheelers. Um, we don't have that much space for furniture, obviously, either, so um. A lot of the stuff, as I mentioned, will be kind of customized, we may take it in seasonally or so, so.
And there's not, um, the building doesn't have big entrances for even getting furniture, I mean.
No.
Yeah.
It does, it, so, um, we did off, order like a sofa that we'll be showing in the showroom, but again, we even had to. Customize it to make it smaller and everything too.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a box truck.
Um, that's a good question, I'm not really sure.
We've been using a Sprinter van now.
Okay, right, cool. Um, do you mind me asking where your storage facilities?
Um.
It's in the, it's the, it's right behind BJ's in Yorktown.
Okay, cool.
Can't remember the name of it yet, sorry.
Yeah, that's right, I was wondering what, what kind of distance it's within.
Yeah, it's closer to our, that's what I think, part of the manner.
Uh, I don't think the board has requested any changes to your plan, so I think as, as it was submitted is, as it stands. Um, so um, I think, you know, uh.
I, I noticed, and I don't think this is going to create a issue, but if. Um, something needed to be checked for site plan review or amendment or subdivision, neither one is checked.
Um. Yeah, I.
A pure formality.
Yeah. Bro, I'm just kidding, uh, um, no, I think that, like, uh, I, I'm sure that's a thing that we can't amend.
This should be application.
Yeah, yeah, for itself, yeah. Um, yes, this is not, this, for the record, this is not a subdivision. Uh, so, um, all right, well, um, I'd like to go ahead and uh, open the meeting to public comment now. Um. And just uh, a reminder about the rules here, um, if you want to make public comments, uh, please state your name and addresses for the record. Um, all the questions that you have about this particular application should be addressed to the board, not to the applicant. Um, the board may decide to ask the applicant for clarification of the result, um, and um. Uh, also, the board is not technically required to answer, respond to any of the questions unless uh, it's a clarification of the procedure, so. Um, just want to make sure everyone's clear on the ground rules there, uh, we don't have any written comments, but if we did, we'd read them into the record. Um, so is there anyone, I'll, I'll start off in the room, and then I'll move online, is there anyone in the room that would like to make public comment on this? Okay, is there anyone online that would like to make a public comment about this? Yes, we have one. Uh, one second, one second, you're muted.
Yes, one moment.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now, please state your name and your address.
Great, Rosie McGuire, uh, eight Fish Street, Cold Spring, New York, and my husband Gordon Weiss.
Hello.
Hi.
Here, and same address, um, I think our main concern is the parking.
Yep.
Yep. We're gonna park when they come shopping.
Uh, that's a fair concern, definitely top of mind of, of a, a lot of village residents, uh. Um, I think in this case, the, um, the site plan does actually provide the required number of parking for this particular use. Um, so, uh.
Yes, we have two parking.
You have two.
Yeah, there's two, there's two, yeah.
For the whole store?
Yeah, that, that, that is, um, that's currently what is required under the, under the, under the village code.
For a retail store?
Yes.
Correct.
Really?
That, that was the first thing we looked at.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Uh, but I really appreciate you uh, levying your concern, are there any other concerns you have, like to, or comments you'd like to make?
No.
Not really. Just, I, if I could just make a quick point, um. This is a new board, and I, and uh, we are, we're extremely focused on parking, um, just we've led off, off the bat with um. With parking being, you know, front and center in, in um, the, the few applications that we've processed. Um, parking is like literally been sort of the, the first and most, um, I think important item that we've, we've been, been addressing. And we, we can run through those if you like, um, some other time, but. I, I just want you to understand that we're, 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 it's a high priority for us. Right.
Okay, so here's a crazy question, so say it's a busy Friday, busy Saturday, and the two spots are taken up. Then people will be advised to park where? On the street where our house, where we have our home parking, or where?
Well, part of, the, 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 parking in the village is obviously is contended, right? If, you know, that's, one of the reasons we have the, the parking program, we have resident parking program. And there is the free parking at uh, at the train station. Um, so people, just like every other spot in the village, they'll be directed to valid, valid parking, wherever that happens to be. If um, you know, any place where there is restricted parking for villagers, if they, if they park there and they're not authorized, they'll get ticketed. So um, you know, I think uh, you know, it, it will be addressed in the same way that it's addressed in other parts of the village. Um, okay, thank you for your comment.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Um. Um, all right, I would uh, ask for a motion uh, to close public comment, comment on the record.
I'll make the motion to close public comment, correct.
Just like it.
Okay, thank you, all there.
Oh.
Bye. Okay, uh, we're on to the board's comments, period, uh. But I think this is the pretty straightforward application of change of use, um, I think that's um. In terms of uh, usage, um. I, I, I can imagine maybe some differences with, with the previous use, but I'm actually not confident about the fault, like the kind of the, the regular volume being. Um, being really substantially different, um, but I think we've kind of gone through all the, for me, we've gone through all of the. Um, the required evaluations for evaluating the site plan, and I, I personally feel, uh, you know, like, we've done what we can. Uh, to make sure this is in, in good shape.
Yeah, I agree.
A nicely executed package with.
Yeah.
The photos and everything.
Yeah, and I do think it seems like it's more of a boutique type place, so it's not gonna be. In a way, box store, where you're gonna have multiple, you know, customers in, you know.
Yeah, they're very, especially furniture. We fit in very well with the mix that's already going on.
Yeah, so that's, that's, I think that's a positive, is that it's not gonna be, I don't think it's gonna be a, a big, not saying.
Yeah.
Your, to your, you, your business, but I don't think it's gonna draw a lot of customers at the same time and, and, and heavy traffic.
Yeah, I think design customers would be scheduled and appointment.
Yes.
Space down.
Exactly.
Maybe it is worth mentioning that I think, you know, it probably goes without saying, but it's probably worth saying, just because we're here at the public hearing for the community. Uh, that, you know, um, the location of this, of this spot is, you know, like many of the, of the places in the B one district is nestled amongst. Residential uses, and so um, you know, everyone's entitled to the allowed use of their, of their property, that mean, doesn't mean we shouldn't also be good neighbors. To really try to work with the neighborhood to, to address any issues as they come up.
Of course.
Yeah. Thanks.
We want to be good neighbors.
Yeah, uh, and I'm gonna repeat what we've talked about in the last meeting, that is, being, just being very conscious about your deliveries and so forth, especially when you're dealing with trucks, bigger vehicles, so. Be good neighbors.
Well, and it sounds like they've met the code requirement for parking. So I mean, but in addition to that, it, it just, I mean, we don't, I don't know how many people would show up for a dance class, it's hard to imagine that this would be worse. So, but, but the code's met, so.
Any other comments? Okay, um, then I will ask uh, for a vote to approve the application and authorize the chair to sign resolution.
And I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
By all.
Um, so let's, let's go one by one, um, and vote.
Uh, Henry?
Yes. Uh, I vote to approve.
We'll reword, yes.
Ben, you know, approve.
And uh, I approve, that's each one, thank you. Right, um, do we have a draft, I think, that you prepared?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh. The. Vote. You had that application, is that, though, we can confirm the application was done on May third? And we have confirmation that the, the store distributor board approved on May sixteenth?
Yeah, I saw it.
I borrow your pen. Congratulations, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're excited to be part of the community.
Yeah.
What are our next steps from here then?
Sorry, I'm supposed to read that and take my.
Yeah.
Uh, the torture process.
Yeah. So what was the question?
Uh, what are our next steps from here?
Uh, I don't think you have any from my perspective.
Just the, the payment of, of any fees, um.
But we have escrow for that, right, so that'll, that'll just happen.
It should, yeah, unless there's a, a remaining balance, um, but the chairman will file this resolution with the building department along. With the site plan that you submitted, so that packet, he'll sign that, that'll get filed, and uh, you should be all set. Just um, I, I would check in with the, the building department.
Excuse me, there are waiting period?
As far as.
Yes, as far as opening our doors and.
Uh, no, I mean, I would just, like I said, check with the, the building department, make sure there's no like fire inspections that need to be done, but um. From the planning board's perspective, you should be all set.
Thank you very much, yes.
All right, I do need to read this into the records.
Oh, the whole thing? Is that what you meant?
Yeah.
No, no, you know, yeah, I just meant the condition at the end.
Okay, great, I don't want to read them. Um. Okay, um. I think everybody doesn't have to stick around, if you want, we have some board business, if you want to.
So, what is, what's the next meeting then, that we should come to?
Twenty seven.
Okay, and at, at, at that point, we have all of the details?
Yeah.
And it's presented, the, the board will take a vote on it, or?
No, so we're still, we're still trying to get you to a complete app, complete application.
Got it.
Um, assuming that we are able to get to some confidence about a complete application.
Got it.
Then we will figure out when, when we can have the hearing, which will be basically what we just did here. Yep, and um, well, you know, we, we try to, you know, hopefully you've seen today, we, we try to. Kind of keep these things moving, we don't want people to be, be, to be waylaid and, and bureaucratic process, so we'll try to get you through it as quickly as we can. But um, but yeah, um, and uh, you know, if you, if you submit the application and you, we can at least, I can at least give you feedback about whether. Or not, there are things you've forgotten about, um, I'm not gonna be able to, to say much uh, about. What I think of it, uh, and the details, but I can at least encourage you to include additional details, I think it'll be helpful to the board, so.
And then the vote is a, like a simple majority vote of the five members of the board, or how's it?
Assuming we get to uh, completed application and we go to a public hearing, then it is uh, um, it's a, uh. It has to be an approval of the, of the.
A quorum, so.
Quorum of the, of the full board, so it means that we need three yeses. Uh, so if someone is absent, it doesn't, it doesn't change that, uh, we still need three yeses.
Okay, thank you.
And we need a minimum, how many people at this?
Three members, all, all agree, yeah, yeah.
And no Zoom, right?
Uh, no, so there's, there's certain special circumstances where board members can.
Uh, no, so, so there's, there's certain special circumstances where board members can participate via Zoom.
Okay. Um, do we have any public comments?
No.
I guess the only comment is, do you, are you throwing away the prints and things that we made for, uh, seventy-two?
Um, I believe we, we will probably recycle some of them.
Recycling, if you're, if you're disposing of them recycling or trash, we go through a, uh, scary, a scary amount of papers, unfortunately, uh. Are you saying you want to, may I, may I have one or two?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I'm otherwise gonna go print, cause I turned, my wife handed all of them in.
I see.
And I've had, had extra prints made for myself included, so.
Please, please.
It's really, it's really the prints.
Okay.
So.
Oh, those ones.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And thank you all.
Yeah, I really.
Can you make one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Actually, let me ask you really quick before you leave, the, um, current or former use, the last use of the, the building? Uh, yeah, what was it again? Uh, referred to as a, a tchotchke shop, uh, you know, with the, the building department, uh, retail? Retail, yeah, yeah, correct, yeah. I just wanna make it as easy as possible so I can do that note for you. Yeah, thank you, and I really do appreciate trying to sweep that up. Thank you so much. Take care.
Okay, uh, we have our added board business. Would you like to go over, uh, the application with the group?
Well, it's just.
Or just wanna discuss it?
We just wanna discuss it because I started making, um, an outline, and there is so much of this process that I have no knowledge of. So as somebody coming in, um, was not familiar with doing any of these applications, um, I spoke with Karen a little bit. I was online seeing what, um, HDRV had, what the zoning board had. I think there are things that we can steal from them so that we can create like a step-by-step, uh, process. If somebody goes online, just, just as they were asking before, they were saying, okay, what's the next step? What do we do now? And, um, you know, G- Gina Larson was, you know, very well, I thought, prepared, but she didn't know all the steps, and I really hate seeing people waste their time if they know what is expected on them. So I, I was hoping that I could work on that, maybe come up with a, a better outline than I have right now.
Yep.
I also went to the village website, and some of the pages for, um, the planning board, um, are not great. Uh, there's one section that says, um, forms and something.
The, so the, 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 the village website is actually imminently going to be redone, redone. Uh, I have had similar thoughts about the, the organization and the information that's there, um, only because the whole thing's gonna be redone. I've been holding off on making the, or asking the clerk to
Do anything.
Tinker around with it. Um.
But we should be making, maybe have some of our, uh, our ideas or, you know, things that we like to see while they're making these changes.
For sure, for sure, and, and I think like, you know, um, uh, we can, we can create a, a list, a list of, of asks, um, that we think would be useful. And on the application, I think, um, definitely, so I was a part of the, the, the retooling of the zoning board application, uh, which I think was a, was a really positive step, it added a lot. It added both a lot of detail and it pointed people to external, uh, resources
Yes.
to get, to get kind of more information. Um, so I think those are things that are gonna be really good. One of the challenges the planning board has, the village, that the zoning board does not, is the zoning board is a, is a little bit more structured, and, uh, it's like linear and it has a rubric.
Yes.
So it's like, it's like, you, you know, these are the five, you know, qualities that we are evaluating, yeah, yeah, or nay, and, and, um, and the, there's a little bit, like, even though we ha, I don't think we've experienced it as much so far in this planning board's tenure.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of branching factors.
Yes.
If you recall Jonathan's original presentation, that, that flowchart, that was like, it wasn't, it wasn't like three, it wasn't like three things. It was like, well, you could do three things, or you could, you know, basically go around the world. Uh, so I think there's, there's a balancing act to, to, to have there. I think, um, probably just something that will take a stab at, at, there's a long way of saying, I think, a dra, a draft, which I, I, I'd love for you, you to, to, to propose to the group, should at least have some nod to the fact that maybe we're, we're using words like typically, or, you know, things like that to help kind of couch that, like, we're not setting expectation about exactly how it's gonna go, but these are the things that, that the planning board typically cares about in a typical application. And, um, so I think with that framing, that's, that will get us a long way, and then, and then we'll have Jonathan review to make sure we're not, um, misleading anyone about the way things are gonna go.
Yeah, I think like you said, the, the planning board, um, process is not so much a one-size-fits-all, so it's kind of hard to explain to someone exactly what's going to happen.
Yeah.
And it's a more informal process too than the zoning board, so, uh, it kind of develops at each meeting.
Yeah. Great, so would you like to, I, I think there's, there's no, there's no rush on it, but, um, uh, I think if you would like to propose changes or, or even, you know, put together some thoughts and send it around?
Yes.
Via email?
Okay.
Um, we won't discuss it, uh, virtually, but we will all be able to read it beforehand so we can comment and discuss uh, in this section of the, of the next meeting, or whenever, whenever it's available, just, you know.
Okay.
So there's, again, there's no rush, but, um, I think that would be super useful. Cool, thank you.
Great.
Okay, the last bit is, uh, people might have noticed that Karen hasn't, hasn't attended yet. Um, Karen, you would like to explain why you're still here and why you're not on a beach somewhere?
Well, it, it's called an overdeveloped sense of responsibility, I suppose. Well, uh, no, we did, you know, um, Abigail is new now, and she's the village. She's gonna be great, but, um, we had kind of that shift, you know, and so she's gonna be great, and I thought I'd stick around, just help her a little bit.
We greatly appreciate.
Control issues, I don't know.
I know.
Oh, was there some, there was someone that was here at the last meeting?
Yeah, so, so this is the new person.
Right, she's no longer here, she's no longer involved. Okay, but that's, I just want to be clear.
So again, lovely to work with you, and if I come back next time, I'll be wearing a disguise, so nobody knows, so.
Yeah.
Can we learn her name this meeting, or should we just wait for the next one? Right, right, I'm just, oh, and I'm circulating.
Some new people. Okay, okay, terrific.
Great, um, we don't, we don't.
Okay.
Um, but we do actually have to add the adoption of the resolution for one thirty-three, one thirty-five, man.
That's just on me to sign, or do we have to vote to approve?
Yeah, vote to, uh, adopt the, the resolution as drafted, so I have a, a copy here, yeah, um, everyone wants.
Yeah, why don't, why don't, yeah, why don't we?
Can you explain a little what the resolution is? It's just memorializing what you voted on.
Oh, okay, okay, what we, what we managed to do.
Last time.
Uh, what we managed to do at the end of this, uh, of the public hearing, but didn't do it in the last, in the last.
So, I'm, okay, I got you. Is that all? Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Hey, so we should probably do, um, like a vote, a, a vote aloud, uh, after everyone's had a chance to review it. Yeah, there's really two ways to, um, when you're approving an application, uh, you can approve it like it is tonight, uh, where you just vote and sign the resolution, but in some cases, you might not be sure if it's ready to be approved or what public comment there might be. So, uh, in that scenario, you would, uh, authorize me to prepare a resolution memorializing the vote.
So, for that one, does it now go to a different board? The one thirty-three, one thirty-five, or they can start?
As long as, uh, they're all set with the HDRV.
Yeah, they have a public hearing on, um, July second
Okay.
with the HDRV.
Okay.
And then, um, they will attend to all three boards, and hopefully they can move forward.
Right, and so that's a condition of their approval from the planning board is that they have to get approval from the HDRV.
Cause I saw a sign out in front of the building.
And if for some reason the HDRV, um, wasn't willing to approve it and wanted major changes, then potentially the applicant could be back here, depending on what the changes were.
Oh, boy.
But, uh, hopefully that won't happen.
There'd have to be pretty substantial changes.
Yeah, yeah. If it was just the side, right. Then if the HDRV wanted them to, you know, completely change the layout of the deck for some reason, then they might have to come back, but if it was just the colors or the materials.
Yeah.
Does the village have a, like a color palette, uh?
The only thing that. So the only thing that I'm not sure about here is the, uh, maybe you highlighted this to me and I, and I just failed to note it, when I was reviewing it, I think the site plan got amended that, the day before.
Yeah, so I think it, it may have been a typo on their plans. Uh, I think they, what they sent to us in late last month was new, but it still had the date carried over from the previous set. Um, so we'll just, uh, confirm that before you actually sign the plans themselves.
So I confirm.
The correct date.
The, and it's the date of the submission though, right?
It's, no, so it's gonna be the date that's actually on the plans, the date that the, the architect, uh.
That's funny, cause it's like, that's not necessarily a unique identifier, right, that like?
Uh, well, they're, they're supposed to, um, if they revise the plans, note that, uh, the plans have been revised.
I see, so you're, you're gonna go back and check to make sure that James just didn't forget to u- update the
The date.
The date, okay. Okay, that's, that's my only, that's my only comment here.
I don't know if Ben initialed it, should we, it's, you said we're gonna do a vote?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there a, a motion to, um, adopt the resolution as drafted? I'm a motion to adopt the resolution as drafted.
Have to authorize the chair.
Chairman's side. And if it, and if it turns out that there, um, the date of the plans needs to be changed, we can circulate that again and ever can, can confirm, but that'd be like a procedural, right, change.
So good.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I know how far your pen is, Ken?
You do bank pen.
Fifty all these, right?
Bye. Thank God.
Jesse, I had, um, the minutes that were approved on April twenty-third, April ninth, and April twenty-fifth, so this handles up to.
I think, uh, uh, would you like to make a motion to adjourn? Uh, we'll have to just, yeah, on their time.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say. You second?
I'll second, yes.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How we can, uh, stop our Zoom recording?